Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. Due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive Limiting Person-to-Person Contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Ferguson Falls School District School Board Meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electrical means. And with that, Clerk, can you establish a call?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Canutson. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Steven Biggessa.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Okay, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? Hold on, in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Agenda passes.
Do we not have Natalie on?
No, Natalie's not on.
Okay, then you don't have to roll call then.
No, no.
She was planning to.
Great.
All right, so I'm not sure if she'll be on later.
She might. So we're moving on to item number D, which is the Resolution of Acknowledgements, and I will have our Clerk.
Certainly. I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. A thank you to Ruby's Pantry for their donation to our elementary schools.
Do I have a second on that resolution?
A second, yeah.
Thank you, Steve. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Or the resolution is adopted.
Moving on to item number E, we have our reports. Our first report is from our elementary principal at Adams McKinley, Scott Colbeck.
Yeah, where would you like me to get my report from?
Can you stay right there?
Yeah. If you want. It's okay. Yeah. Would you like me to stand or remain in my seat?
Whichever you prefer. You could stay. Whatever makes you comfortable.
Okay. You know what, if it's okay, I'll just be right here, Kirby.
I can say fun, go.
Very good. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Here we are. We've completed 15 days of school. It's, I have to say, it's great to be at this point. I think it's fair to say it's been the probably most unusual and busiest start to a school year when we think of what transpired in August and then thus far in September. So we're just very pleased to have 15 days where we've gotten to know our students and things, I think, for the most part are going well. I have to say, I was a little concerned about how little five, six, seven, eight-year-old students would do with masks, but boy, oh, boy, they're really impressing me with just their willingness to wear their mask, to wear it correctly. They're just, they've been troopers through it all, and it's been a really pleasant surprise, I will say. So hats off to all of our students for doing what they need to do to keep themselves safe and others safe. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our morning transfer site. This is really interesting. In past years, all of, we'll say, 20 buses have arrived here at Happy Secondary School, and then kids get off the 20 buses and get on various buses that shuffle them off to their elementary schools. Well, now, we're taking these 20 buses that usually arrive here, and we have four, what I call, mini-bus transfer sites. McKinley has a site in the morning, so does Adams, Cleveland, and Kennedy. Each site then has approximately five buses. So I'll just talk about the Adams transfer site for a second, and the way the Adams one works is the way the other three work. But envision then, five buses showing up at Adams. They don't all show up at the same time, but when that first bus shows up, it only lets the students who attend Adams School off the bus. The others remain on the bus, and then here comes the second bus, maybe 30 seconds, a minute, two minutes later. Same thing, that second bus only lets the Adams students off, all the rest stay on it. Pretty soon, three, four, five buses come, all of the Adams students are off those buses. Now, when the fifth and final bus arrives, now all of the students who are not attending Adams School get off the bus at the same time, transfer onto their bus. It's just a small, I'll just say, quiet, calm, nice little site. And the kids get on their buses, and then they, each bus is marked nicely with signs. So if I'm not a student at Adams, but we'll say I'm a student at Cleveland, I can easily find my Cleveland bus because it's parked in the same spot every day, and there's a nice colored sign for Cleveland, and it works slick. I think maybe we're on to something, and that in future years, we'll see. We'll learn more at the end of the year, but in future years, perhaps, this is what our morning routine looks like in our school district. I will say, this new approach will require much more snow removal in the winter. A lot of snow removal in the winter. So, you know, we'll have to assess this thing through an entire school year and just see what we experience. But I just wanted to share that with you a little bit. You've already heard it mentioned, that Ruby's Pantry made a very generous donation. I saw a check made out to McKinley School today for $500. I saw another check made out to Adams School today for $500. And that money is dedicated to purchasing a Chromebook cart for each of the buildings. So thank you very much to Ruby's Pantry. I know I talk a little bit about JAWS from time to time, but I have to tell you a cute story. JAWS started today at Adams School, and a little boy came through the lunch line, and at the end of the lunch line, he saw me sitting there. I was taking lunch numbers today. We were just short somebody today, so I filled in there. But he said, "Mr. Colbeck, what is the record for JAWS?" I don't know what he was really getting at, so I just simply said, to keep the line moving, I said, "I don't know, but whatever it is, I have a feeling you're gonna break it." And he said, "Well, today I ran 15 laps." Now, I don't know if you know, that seven laps makes a mile. So this little guy ran not only two miles, but he ran another one-seventh of a mile after he finished two miles. So a lot of kids at Adams School were pretty excited today. Mr. Meyer, our FIET teacher, does a nice job during his FIET classes, teaching how that program works and teaching the routine. And so today, they started in earnest, and they actually had their first card. And we had somebody there helping Mr. Meyer with that program on the playground today. Today also started map testing at McKinley School, and tomorrow, we started Adams School. One of the reasons that we did not start at Adams is so we could send our test proctor Andrea Knick from Adams School over to McKinley to help us there. Our test proctor at McKinley is taking a leave for the year, so we have somebody new there. So Andrea was very helpful to us at McKinley School today. We'll be map testing for the next week at McKinley, and probably just a little bit more than one week's time at Adams School. Picture Day is coming up on Wednesday of this week at McKinley, and Thursday of this week at Adams. And our students who are 100% distance learners, we've also scheduled a time for those students to come to school if they'd like to have their school photo taken as well. Speaking of distance learners, I want you to know that in kindergarten, we have a teacher then dedicated to working with our 12 students in kindergarten who are 100% distance learning this year. And then in first grade, we have a teacher dedicated to working with 20 distance learners in first grade, and in second grade, our distance learning teacher is currently working with 19 kids. Now, the one thing you need to know about those numbers I just shared with you, they seem to fluctuate almost daily. Today, as an example, then, we have a second-grade student who decided that distance learning really wasn't for her right now, so she's coming back to second grade starting tomorrow in person. Lastly, I just wanted to just thank our school nurse, Jen Kohors, and our secretaries at the McKinley Schools, Michelle Carlson at McKinley, and then Brittany Ortreding, or Brittany Conrad at Adams School. So our secretaries act as the health aides, and they have, you know, an extra set of responsibilities this year with coronavirus. So they do an excellent job of record-keeping and communicating with families about what's going on with the children in the school. And so I looked at some data today, just to share with you. Between McKinley and Adams, we've had 28 students who have had some sort of an absence that's been somehow related to signs or symptoms of COVID-19. Of those 28 students, 16 of them have decided to be tested, and all 16 have come back negative. None of the students who have been tested have tested positive. Of the 28 students who have had some sort of an absence due to signs or symptoms, interestingly enough, 14 of those students never did come to school and just stayed home, and the families communicated that to us. And then another 14 were in school and then ended up going home from school because they were either showing signs or symptoms in school, or maybe they had a sibling in another school who was showing signs and symptoms and they weren't, or maybe somebody in the family had found out something and then had contacted the school. So just some interesting numbers to look at. When I talk about the 28 absences, I'm talking about 28 individual children. I'm not talking about 28 days of absences, because with those kids, it might vary anywhere from two or three days to, well, 14 days. We had a student who self-quarantined for 14 days just simply because grandpa had tested positive. So just really, just really hats off to, hats off to our people who are in those healthcare positions, and our school nurse, who Jen is just doing a fantastic job, working with students, working with their families, working with our own staff, communicating with the admin team to let us know what's happening and going on. So like I said, when I started my report tonight, is we're just really, really pleased to have 15 days of school in person under our belt. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board?
So for instance, if you have 20 kids in first grade that are distance learning, so of those 28 kids that are being absent, are they, they're going into distance learning during that quarantine, or they're not?
We've, we did that with one when we found out right from the get-go that he was gonna be gone a full 14 days. But the other kids, think of it in years past, if a student was gonna be gone, we'll say, for a week on a family trip, teachers gather the schoolwork, bring it to the office, parent comes in and picks up the schoolwork.
So it's not a lot of movement that way?
We've done that with one person, and to be honest with you, that's still, that's still, I think, the jury's still out on that.
Okay.
We're just, we experimented with it one time.
Right.
It kind of worked, worked okay.
And if they quarantine for 14 days, they're probably missing 10 because of weekends.
Yeah, exactly.
Other questions from the board?
I just wanted to make a comment just on the JAWS thing. It was, I don't know how I should say, cute, I thought, today. I just happened to be driving by at noon, and the students were out there with their cards running around, and even the social thing, as some of the students stopped and waited for their friends to catch up to them, and then they kept it on, so it is a cute program.
It's pretty cool.
Definitely a, a good program, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to our next report is from Tindy Runn, our elementary principal at Cleveland.
All right, well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I, too, am just surprised that we're already at the 15-day mark of the new school year. And during these first 15 days, I echo what Mr. Colbeck is saying about how students have been so responsible and cooperative and are just carrying through with all of the unique elements that this year has brought upon all of us. And we quickly learned from Adams and McKinley that having a lanyard connected to your face covering is very helpful to keep it clean and keep track of it, and just be able to have it last throughout the school day. So we ordered lanyards, one for every child, and they're wearing them connected to their face covering in an effort to have them on their person throughout the day so that those in-between times, moving in the hallways, standing in the line for lunch, leaving the lunchroom, returning to their classroom, are also times where they are wearing their face coverings throughout the day. And we, they're very cooperative, it has been very helpful already. So we're very, we're very pleased. And we talked with the students, said, "We're all doing this together in an effort to keep each other safe and healthy so that we can come to school and learn together." So they're getting some positive messages while we're promoting all these elements that we're all required to do, so we're pleased with that. The kids have really done an outstanding job, too, of becoming really familiar with those school routines, whether it's getting off the buses in the shuttle in the morning, passing to their lockers, and then coming to the breakfast line. We've changed things up with the morning routine, once they get into the building, to just lessen the traffic flow and have fewer kids moving about the building at one time. We rearranged the lunchroom, which has been to be as accommodating as it can be to help grade levels sit together, allow a little more space, have one single entrance to the lunchroom and then a single exit, again, to kind of facilitate one-way traffic coming and going out of the lunchroom. So the kids have become very familiar with those routines and procedures. And the other really fun thing is how they have been so excited to reconnect with one another and welcome the new students to our community. They're making friends, they are having lots of opportunities to interact and building those friendships as well. Some of our September activities have had a little different twist to them. Annually, second-grade students look forward to their study of the monarch butterfly and have opportunities to go out to Prairie Woodlands Learning Center and catch and take monarch butterflies. So this year, we aren't able to go to Prairie, but with the help of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they have facilitated some virtual field trips already. And what those have amounted to is a Zoom session with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service staff member. So preliminary instruction, little information to set up the learning activity, and then the teacher and the students from Cleveland have gone outdoors, close to the building, and also a few blocks away from school to carry out the learning activity. And then upon return to the classroom, have Zoomed again with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife staff. So some of these quality learning activities are happening, just in a different format, and teachers and staff are being very creative in how they can carry these out for students. Third grade as well have virtual learning activities planned with the Prairie Woodlands Learning Center. Each class has a scheduled time to do that, and they submit to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife staff. They are carrying these out within the school schedule and being very accommodating with us as well. One afternoon, I happened to drive out to Prairie for a safety drill, and as I was pulling into the parking lot, it was very clear to me that one of the staff members from there was doing her side of the virtual field trip while the Cleveland kids were doing theirs when I was leaving Cleveland. So I got to see both sides of that field trip taking place. So it's remarkable how they're making all of that happen in a really great way. A highlight of September for our fourth-grade students is, of course, getting the opportunity to become part of orchestra. And last Monday evening, just a week ago, that orchestra roundup event was held virtually with the efforts of our orchestra instructors and the music companies. They were able to facilitate that for students and parents to get signed up for orchestra, and also have that opportunity for parents to rent instruments for the school year. So that will be an upcoming exciting thing for those fourth graders. Their instruments are to be arriving, I think, the next two days, so we're gonna get them in the hands of those kids. And then one other virtual opportunity that is being presented to the school is Cedar Walters with the Otter Tail County Recycling. It has a lot of resources available and opportunities for classroom teachers to take advantage of so that students can continue to learn how they can also become involved in these efforts to preserve our communities, their efforts to recycle, and the importance of all of that. So it's another learning opportunity that's being held virtually this year. I was gonna mention, last week at Cleveland, our second and third grade classes took the math, reading and math assessments. Mr. Colbeck mentioned that's taking place at Adams and McKinley this week. Typically, or in the last few years, third-grade students have not taken part with the math assessments. This year, it was offered to districts at no additional cost for third graders to take the math tests in the fall. We decided to take advantage of that, just giving that added measure. So the results allow teachers to compare the students' last winter's math scores with this fall score. And it kind of gives us that measure of growth, maintenance of skill, or regression. And given that information, it allows the student, the teacher, to kind of plan accordingly for instruction, some grouping, and then also some intervention or remediation as well. So it's a valuable additional data point that we're taking advantage of. While our second-grade students will continue to take the math assessment in mid-year and then also again in the spring, our third and fourth-grade students will do the STAR reading and math assessments periodically over the course of the year. And that's our tool to continue to measure student growth and just do those frequent progress monitoring probes to help us adjust instruction or groupings as well. We are glad to know and have learned that the STAR assessments can also be done remotely. So our students who are in the distance learning sections will be doing the STAR assessments right along with their classmates who are in-house. And should we, as a district, need to shift to a different tier of instruction, it's a tool that we will continue to use with all of the students. That was great. We actually figured out last weekend, so that was a bonus. And then student enrollment, I just wanted to touch base with that, too. We have continued to see changes each week. Teachers have been very accommodating and welcoming of these new students who are making some shifts either into the classroom or out, or from a different district to Ferguson Falls. That change has continued to happen. Currently, we have 22 third graders who are in the distance learning section and 24 fourth graders. And I applaud the teachers who are doing, planning for the distance learning sections. They are really figuring some things out, and I think, over time, their new learning will also benefit their colleagues in each of those grade levels, too. So there's, good things are continuing to be learned. And then lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that parent-teacher conferences are right around the corner. Those are scheduled for mid-October, afterward, 22nd, 23rd, and 26th. And further information, or more detailed information, will be mailed to families here in the very near future. We will continue to use that online signup, which allows parents to see the slots that each teacher has available for conference times, and they can select the time that will work out best for their families. But again, more detailed information will be forthcoming regarding conferences. And with that, I will, if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board, or Principal Runn?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report will come from our secondary school principal, Dee Monkey.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was just comparing notes a little bit to last year in relationship to what I had written down and presented to the board, and it was interesting how covering some of the same items, but they might look a whole lot different, which is typical for the year. I had on the top of last year's sheet here, it said that everyone has been so great about the start of the school year. Talk about an understatement in relationship to this year. Just fantastic, the students, the teachers, the support staff. Everybody has just been awesome in relationship to pulling this off. And it's been extremely busy for everybody. We continue to have a lot of changes in relationship to parents and students choosing the different models or platforms that they'd like to work off of. I think I handled about eight different changes just today at anywhere from grades five through 12 in relationship to coming in, going out. And so I think we're gonna continue to see that as conditions might change. But once again, I just applaud all of our staff for being flexible enough to be able to handle that as these families make their decisions. So we've been accommodating to that, and it's went well. But I was also struck by the fact that we started talking about homecoming week. And we're gonna look to pull something off. I'm not 100% sure what it's gonna look like, but I think it's gonna be targeted more to our juniors and seniors. It's probably gonna be a lot of outside activities. It probably won't involve a big coronation in the auditorium or anything like that. But we're still gonna have a junior-senior royalty court, and probably have that outside on the football field. But we just completed our student council membership as of today. Mr. Tilke's gonna get that group together and kind of finalize some plans. The week for that homecoming week is gonna be October 5th through the 9th. And although it doesn't have to be, you know, a Friday night football game to pull off homecoming, but it looks like we will get one, and we will have a home football game on October 9th. It will be our first game of the year, so that's gonna be really interesting. And more information will come out about all of this. It'll probably be very limited in relationship to being able to be there as a spectator, but we hope to be able to allow a few things, especially if we're outside, that maybe others could be able to join us for. Very impressed with some new staff members that we brought on board, especially the new staff members about a week before the school year started. Just amazing how we had to make adjustments right up to the last minute, and these people have stepped in, and their colleagues up and down the hallways have been amazing to work with these new people and get them brought up to speed quickly. And our tech staff has been so impressive in relationship to getting these people the equipment and supplies that they need, and the training that they need in a very short time to be able to pull off all these different educational environments that we're trying to provide. So special hats off to those people as well. As others mentioned, our distance learning numbers are about in the same category as what you heard here, at each grade level, looking at lower 20s. I think our eighth grade is a little bit higher than that, but right in that kind of one-section range across basically five through 12. In fifth and sixth grade, we have a team of two teachers that are working with that distance learning section. So it's kind of unique in that each one of those teachers will take literally a half a day to work with those distance kids, which I think has been really appreciated on the part of the students and the parents at home as well, to have multiple contacts in relationship to working with those students. And it breaks up their day a little bit, too, as they get a chance to see some face-to-face students. And even when we've had some transitions in and out of the building, we've been able to stick with that same team in some cases. So as they were coming either in or out, they'd have an opportunity to work with the same teachers. This week, we've already had the opportunity to pass out one-to-one Chromebooks to our seventh through 12th graders up to this point. And now this week, we're looking to assign in fifth and sixth grade. So for some reason, we would go out on a particular classroom or a particular grade level, we'd have the opportunity to have those one-to-one Chromebooks assigned as well. They probably won't be bringing them back and forth, but I know one thing that's talked about is an example, just taking it home for an evening and trying that out in your home environment, making sure that... and trying that out in your home environment, making sure that you connect to the Wi-Fi and everything else, so that we get a chance to maybe try that before a student, even an individual student, you know, may have to be sent home for a few days on a quarantine situation or something like that. They'd be able to know that they'd be still connected here to the school and make sure that everything's working right for them. Our first midterm is quickly approaching, already at October 9th. And so we'll look to have grades out the following week on those midterm reports because, as I mentioned, parent-teacher conferences will be coming up that week of October 19th, towards the end of that week and the start of the next week. So we want to be ready for that. We had some conversations today even concerning parent-teacher conferences, and we're looking to do those virtually. And with that, we're going to have parents be able to sign up for 10, 15, 20-minute session here, depending on their grade level, and make those arrangements ahead of time over Google meets so that they have an opportunity to speak directly with the teacher in a virtual scheduled session, which should make it easy for our parents, too. If they have a difficult time getting both parents at a conference in relationship to work and other schedules, should be able to work that out to just dial in at the time of your conference and talk to your teacher. And then finally, life at our other schools here is also very busy. Our IQ Academy online school has topped 850 students already as of this week. That's probably right around 300 students higher than the same time last year. We've had fewer of our students signing up for just a class or two, probably by half. But we've had double the amount of students that have moved to, in-district students that have moved to IQ full-time. So where we probably started out last year, you know, about in the teens, we're probably up to about 35 students now, at our levels anyway, that have transferred full-time, in-district students towards IQ. So not quite sure what that all means in relationship to those choices, but we're just glad that we've got that kind of opportunity, you know, right here, directly connected with our school district, if that's what the parents are searching for in relationship to an online environment. And then finally, it is also busy over at the ALC. Their total student count numbers is right at about 74, which is very close to full capacity for them. And out of those 74, they are in the high teens as far as students that are out on 100% distance learning. So a challenge for all of our secondary teachers, especially in grades nine through 12, to deliver instruction in all three different environments, face-to-face, hybrid, and distance learning. It's an amazing challenge, and they're working extremely hard to be able to pull that off, basically in KSS and over at the ALC. So with that, take any questions?
Questions for Principal Monkey?
Dean, is the parade from home?
I do not. I think that was one idea that they kind of put on the shelf right away, just in the sense of just not being held responsible for what goes on all the way through the parade route.
Sure.
And so, no, I think we're going to check that one off the list and try it again next year.
With the 250 fans that can go to the football games, are we giving priority to parents of the players? Or is there just 250, that's it?
Yeah, you know, and that's also going to include visitors as well.
Right.
So we have to make an allowance for that. I think the basic plan, and again, this is all in discussion at this point, is to really turn those tickets over to the team and to the players.
Sure.
And they make that determination. It's their game, and I think that if students want to give their tickets away to other students, maybe they don't, maybe it's just not automatic that they've got two parents that can come to the game, or, you know, why not take advantage of that? But I think the plan right now is to have that control managed by the team.
Just the team is going to have it?
The team is going to probably kind of figure that out. And yet, if one player wants to invite his next-door neighbor because that's an important relationship that they have in relationship to playing football, great, go ahead and do that. And I think we are also, you know, making plans to totally separate the visitor side from the home side. We have parking access over there, we've got coming in and out. We can have tickets or picking the pre-tickets up from, and we're going to really make that separation between probably no reason whatsoever for our fans to be coming across for anything.
Be concessions on the other side, too?
I don't know, probably very limited if there would be, yeah. Other questions?
I think it's interesting how you, what you talked about, you know, what we were discussing a year ago versus today. And somebody asked me that same question a while back, and I said, well, I'll just give you one example. I think it's kind of ironic. Back in January and February, when it was so cold and we were missing school, we sat in here and we debated back and forth whether we could maybe do a couple of distance learning for us to make up these school days. And like, it's not ironic that we, all the reasons we couldn't do it because we didn't have a one-to-one of computers, we didn't have Wi-Fi for kids, and we didn't have the tools like Zoom, we didn't know how to use them. And it's like, okay, all of a sudden, boom, I guess we figured out a way to do it.
Yeah, we should never have to make up the snow day again.
That's kind of ironic, isn't it? We were thinking about back in February, because of the calendar. Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you. Okay, our next report is from Subtendrick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, too, would just like to start out and thank the staff for their hard work and flexibility. We continue to have a smooth start to the school year under very unusual circumstances, and that doesn't happen by accident. So again, I appreciate everyone's positive attitude and rolling the things up and being flexible to get the job done. I think we discussed this next item maybe at our work session a couple weeks ago, but I'm not sure we mentioned it during the board meeting itself. But I did want to congratulate Scott Cumrow on being the district's teacher of the year. And we've seen firsthand Scott's creativity and ability to engage his students in music, and just again, wanted to congratulate him on this great honor. We had another really proud moment for our music department with Mr. Frayland. His KSS men's choir was selected to perform for the Minnesota Music Educators Association Winter Conference. And we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like at this point. It could possibly be an in-person performance, or they could do something via Zoom or some virtual means, or they could pre-record and send something down there. But regardless, it's just a wonderful testament to the quality of the music education going on. We continue to monitor our weekly COVID rates per 10,000 in Otter Tail County. We were at 9.31 last Thursday, so that was a little bit of a dip back. We do anticipate those numbers going up when we get our results this coming Thursday. On the technology side, we did mention the one-to-one initiative. We have continued to have a little bit of a glitch with that. We thought that our Chromebooks, first of all, we thought that our Chromebooks would be here in early August. Then the delivery date was pushed back until early to mid-October. It's been pushed back again. And so we're looking at the last 200 Chromebooks or so that we need to go one-to-one, arriving here on November 1st. So I, for one, am crossing my fingers that we would not be needing to go to Tier 3 between now and then because those devices are a really important component of our Tier 3 delivery of instruction. Distance learning, then-and-now communication went out to our families to show them the changes that we had made based on our own evaluation of what we were able to do last spring and the feedback that our families gave us at the end-of-the-year survey. So we hope that people are finding the experience to be more user-friendly and easier to navigate this fall. Dollars for scholars, I want to publicly thank Peg Kaler and Catherine Vukovich for their work on the board. They are outgoing board members. I know in particular Peg served on the board for many, many years and really appreciate all that she's done for our students. And the board welcomed two new members, Jake Gustafson and Stephanie Carter. So congratulations and appreciation to them. Last week, we started our pickup meal service. And if I'm remembering correctly, I believe we had about 82% of the families that had registered showed up and picked up their meals, which we were really pleased with. That program will likely continue to grow here in the next weeks. And then the last item on my list is a brief Lincoln update. Unfortunately, there was a COVID-19 case among the people working on that facility. And because of that, we basically lost about a week's worth of progress on that building as they shut the construction down, brought in crew to sanitize and sanitize the facility. So with that, certainly able to entertain any questions? Any questions for Subtendrick?
I don't know if the rest of you saw it, but they posted, you did the survey on distance learning from last year, and then you put the thing out on Facebook today. That's a really well-done thing. If you haven't had a chance, go on, it's at the Ferguson Public Schools, anyway. It showed the results of the survey from last year, our shortcomings. And it was like boom, 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 different categories. And then over here, it was like boom, 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 what we've done to address those shortcomings. That was really well-done. Thank you for doing that today.
No, thank you.
Are there comments or questions for Subtendrick? Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the September 14th regular board meeting. Personnel, Ryan Jenkey?
We have a few items. Good evening, everyone. A few items here for the board. I'll start with the certified staff hires. Heather Miller, there would be an increase in her original contract, which is a .88833, excuse me, and now she's going to be a full-time person. I, excuse me, elementary teacher. Jennifer Smith, she's, well, she began today as a special education teacher at IQ Academy. And Jacob Johnson, a long-term substitute as a business teacher, effective the 23rd of September through 10/14. Support staff hires, Lane Seeland, parent educator. She'll be a long-term substitute here at Kennedy Secondary School and beginning tomorrow. And then Mike Mallard, noon hour supervisor here at Kennedy Secondary School. He'll be doing a few days each week here in Kennedy Secondary School. So then I guess the last item here is our 2020, 2022 agreement between the school district and a custodian secretary group. And so I would present these all for board approval tonight.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 opposed? General consent items pass. We don't have any old business. Yeah, they all say with role because of Natalie.
Because of Natalie.
Natalie's not here.
Natalie's not here, so we don't have.
Excuse me.
There is no old business, so we're going to move on to our new business. Item number one is our proposed levy for taxes payable 2020. And our finance director, Mike Spolstra, want to give us an update on what we're in.
And if I don't do a good enough job of detailing that, just please let me know. But overall, we're estimating a decrease in total tax levy dollars of about 2.38%. Two notables among the itemized groupings. If you click above, starting with long-term facilities maintenance, that saw a decrease of about 6.3%. That doesn't necessarily mean that we are losing any fundings for long-term facilities maintenance. This is just saying that we saw the state kick in an extra 2% in aid. So we actually saw an increase in LTFM funding this year overall of about $2,000, but the state is kicking in some more funding for that. Number two, if you scroll down the pages, there's a debt service portion where we saw a 11%, close to 12% decrease. And that is, we're going to see some, a reduction in debt payments this year. And we're also going to see a credit to the taxpayer for excess debt reserves. Now, that does not happen every year. Every year, the taxpayer pays 105% of the principal and interest payments. And what it does is that the idea is to account for any delinquent taxes that aren't paid. But when everybody is paying their taxes, we build up a reserve. And over time, once it gets big enough, and the state will come in and say, the taxpayer needs a credit, you're exceeding their maximum. So this case this year, that's what we're seeing. So that's why you see a big reduction there of $313,000 that's made up of that. Overall, the market value across the district, property increased by 2.8%. And as of right now, we are looking at an estimated reduction in the tax rate of 1.65%. And unless something unforeseen arises over the next couple of months, we should be at or lower than the 32.6% that was approved at last year. Any questions?
Yes. So the 2.38% you said was a drop, that's the number here that's, but that's the total change in total budget, not necessarily taxes.
No, 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 the estimated tax drop is 1.65%. That is the 32.6% minus the 31.
Right. But because of the market values going up as much as they are, if you take the voter-approved line below that, and if you take that 2374518 and divide by the 2698, you come up with about 88%. You actually see, at a local level, you see a 12% drop.
Can you explain your rationale behind that again?
Okay, so voter-approved is 2,374.
Yep.
For fiscal year '22, for fiscal year '21, it was 2698.
Okay. Yep.
So the drop is 12% between those two numbers. So what I'm seeing...
Did I see that right, Matt?
Probably.
It's a drop, yeah, but the overall tax rate is, I mean, you're dropping, you're going from 32.6 to 31%, that's a 12% drop. I think overall, what he's saying is the taxes, what people are actually paying are dropping by 1.6%, right?
No, that's not true. Because the market values have gone up so much, the tax rate is based on the market values, or is applied to the market values. So your tax rate, yeah, went down from 32.6 to 31. But what I'm saying is that the voter-approved, now the others would be state funding, right?
Yes.
So what the local people are paying, to me, it looks like it's 12% less in fiscal year '22 than fiscal year '21. That's what I'm saying.
I would have to look into your, I'd have to look into it.
Okay.
I think we'd be safe to say that there's going to be someone of, if everything holds and we have nothing else that changes, that they should see some form of reduction in the school district's portions of your taxes.
Yep, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, yeah. Not your overall, because we don't control that part. We control just the school, and we don't control the market values or any of that issue. We just, for our portion of it.
Yep.
We should be able to see a reduction.
Sure, yes.
And so now, just for the public's information, is that there will be a public informational meeting regarding proposed property taxes and budgets. And proposed and final property tax levy is scheduled at 6:00 PM Monday, December 14th, 2020, in the Otter Community Room right here at Kennedy Secondary School during our school board meeting. So for tonight, though, purposes, we will, we need a motion to, unless there's any other questions before we move into the proposed, and we can ask... questions before we move into the proposed, then we can ask further questions if we'd like to. We need a proposed levy for taxes payable 2020 to be set at the maximum amount. Can I get that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I need a, can I get a second?
A second.
Second, Melanie. Any discussion? This is, this can be just a motion, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any good questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is our 2020, 2021 fundraiser request. Can I get a motion to approve the funding request?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion?
I had a question on the Otter coupon books. I think we talked about this last year, I just need some clarification because my understanding is that the fifth, is it the fifth and sixth grade are given the opportunity to sell the books if they want to, it's not mandatory. Does that money from that go towards basketball or does it go towards the fifth and sixth grade classroom? It says it on the thing, it says classroom expenses, but it also says down farther that Otter girls and boys basketball sell the same thing. And is that money separated enough?
It's split, yeah. It's like a splitting proceeds is my understanding how they do it.
Okay. As long as it's separated, that's all I care about. Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is a resolution for designation of an identified officials with authority for educational identity access management. And the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, Professional Educator License Standards Board, PELSB, and the Office of Higher Ed, OHE, require annual designation of an identified official with authority, or Iowa, for each local educational agency that uses the educational identity access management system. The Iowa is responsible for the authorization, review, and receptifying, recertifying, thank you, user access for their local educational agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standards, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will authorize user access to State of Minnesota Education Security System in accordance with the user-assigned job duties and will revoke that user access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties. The board recommends to the authorized Jeff Drake and Elaine Jenkey to act as the identified officials with authority, or Iowa, to add and remove names only for the Fergus Falls Public School District 544-01. Now, is this a, this is a resolution?
It's a resolution, yes.
Thank you. So somebody after that resolution move for its adoption.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion?
It's not something that rolls off your tongue, is it?
No, it does not.
Seriously, don't.
In your own words.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? This is an annual one, so, okay, roll call, please.
All right. Kirby Andersons. Melanie Cole. Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. This concludes our regular school board meeting. We will be going to a work session to talk about school program, COVID-19 update, and student attendance. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, October 12th at 5:15 right here at the Otter Community Room. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Do I get a second?
Second.
Melanie, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.